If you will come to order, if everyone would please take your seat. It is 7:00 PM and we are in our November 13th regular council meeting. Councilmember Kurtz is out of town and has notified us in advance of that particular situation. It is 7:00 PM. I'm going to ask everyone to stand in a moment. We'll be led in an invocation by Chief Carroll. Remain standing. We'll be led in pledges to the American flag and the Texas flag by Councilmember Lamont. Please stand.
Would you pray with me, please? Lord, we thank you so much for today and the actual, the breath that you gave us to breathe today and just to be alive. God, we thank you for your presence in this house and we just ask that you pour out your wisdom on our council members, on our staff, and on our citizens to make the right decisions that are not just right for the city but are right for your kingdom as well. God, your word says that our spirit is willing and our flesh is weak. So tonight, we ask for strength to make the right, those right decisions. We ask for strength for our first responders and in any of our citizens that need your help and aid at this time. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
May be seated. So I noticed some people turned to their left to look at the flags back there. Or you can face the flags in front, it doesn't matter. Flags are back there for two purposes. One, it allows council to face you and say the pledges. And secondly, when we take photographs, when we make presentations to people, we take them back there with the flags and the town seal. So either way, I know it can get a little confusing when we're doing that. It is time for citizens' presentations. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on any matter, whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The council is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentations made to the council at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The council will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the council addressing those items. You may speak up to four minutes or a time limit determined by the mayor or presiding officer. To speak during this item, you must complete the speaker's form that includes the topics of your statement. Topics of presentation should be limited to matters over which the council has authority. I have two people who have signed up for citizens' presentations and if you wish to speak during that time, please speak, pick up a form at the back and turn it into the town secretary will recognize you. The first presentation is by Janet Lamont. Janet, would you come and identify yourself, state your address, and you have the floor.
Janet Lamont, 15 Avalon Drive Trophy Club, Mayor, Council, and Staff. On behalf of the Trophy Club election poll workers, we'd like to thank several individuals for the work and the effort that went well and above beyond making our job smooth and less hectic. Special recognition to the two Town Secretaries of Trophy Club and Roanoke. Holly, who worked and coordinated from the very beginning the process, which was an easy, which was not an easy task, trying to get Denton County official, election officials, Republican Party, Democrat Party, Roanoke Library, and Midland School to come together for this record-breaking election was phenomenal. Also, for the setup of Midland, Middle School on Election Day. To April Hill, Roanoke's Town Secretary, who set up Roanoke Library for the 12 days of early voting, opening and closing, letting us in. We also need to thank the Roanoke Library that shared their facilities with our staff and Midland Middle School, especially Principal Page, Cantrell, and Office Manager Monica McDonald. To Mike Pastor for making us some cool badges. To the Town Manager, Tom Class, Police Chief Patrick Arata. And a special thank you to Fire Chief Wade Carroll. This was truly an historic election. We processed 10,450 voters. 5,850-plus were Trophy Club residents and voted in the county. Thank you for your time and thank you for the hospitality for having us do the elections.
Thank you. The next person who signed up to speak was Mr. Tom Mills. Tom, if you want to come forward, state your name and your address, and then you can address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. More an outdoor topic. My name is Tom Mills. I live at 113 Creek Courts Drive Trophy Club. For the past 32 years, I've been a heavy user of all features of Trophy Club Park, so you'll see me in relation to topics related to that. For the past nine years, I've been the sole maintainer of the Trophy Club Park Trail System. At significant personal expense, I might add. Park and Rec, and Tony might disagree with this, but Park and Rec does not, have they ever maintained a trail system. They do provide the mower, however, and service it. So, but what I want to talk about is bike trails versus horse trails. That seems to be a topic of interest to some people lately. Around Lake Grapevine, there are three bike trail systems. Nob Hills to the northwest of the side of the lake, Rockledge on the northeast side of the lake, Horseshoe on the southeast side of the lake, and there are no entry fees to use these bike trails. There is one horse trail on the north side of the lake, Cross Timbers, and there's no user fee. And the combined Trophy Club Park Walnut Grove Trail, it is a combined trail, they're adjacent to, the parks are adjacent. There is no user fee for the Walnut Grove Park riders, all for riders entering Trophy Club Park from the east end. There's no mechanism for collecting a fee. The fee for Trophy Club is $3 per horse to enter the park at the main gate, or if you ride with Marshall Creek Ranch, they collect the fee. Total horse fees collected in Trophy Club Park is reportedly $10,000 per year, although only $2,000 is budgeted for non-motorized trail maintenance. Replacing horse trails with bike trails, as has been suggested, would eliminate this source of income for the park. Bike trails and horse trails have always been separated for safety reasons. Doorbuck Dallas Off-Road Bike Association maintains a lot of the bike trails in the Dallas area. They call the park ranger to issue citations to horse riders when they're found on bike trails. I confirmed that with their trail steward. Hopefully, the same will happen on the horse trails. When bike riders are found, the authorities will be notified and proper action will be While it is startling when a silent bike swoops up behind a pedestrian, it is usually not traumatic. It's kind of like, whoa, I didn't see you coming here now, kind of thing. However, when a silent biker swoops around a curve and encounters horse riders, it's been described as a near-death experience as the horse bucks and tries to throw the rider. And every adult rider that I've talked to that has had that experience has that same description. When those riders are kids, or less experienced riders, it can be a tragedy. They don't have the strength to hang on when the horse is bucking and so forth. And there are a lot of kids out there. Summer Camp, Marshall Creek Ranch runs a summer camp all summer, and they take posses full of kids out there. And they're in other groups as well, out on the trails. So in closing, I'd like to see this topic be taken seriously. I just want to make a couple of quotes here. A while back, I was by the main park gate and a person was talking to the gate attendant who was trying to explain to them, "The horse trails are over here, the bike trails are over here, and never the twain shall meet." And this person said, "Do you know who I am? I'm on the town council. I can change those rules." Okay, maybe you can, but let's be a little professional about it. And at the last council meeting on October 15th, this statement was made. "It's a blast to ride my bike on horse trails." Well, I hope that blast doesn't turn into getting some kids thrown off their horses and trampled, so, thank you and good evening.
Thank you very much, sir. What was your question? I'm sorry.
He needs to be specific about who made that statement because I don't own a bike.
So I think the question that, Tom, before you leave, if you wouldn't mind, provide for the town secretary who you were referring to about making a statement, if you know who that person was.
I know exactly who it was, sir.
Okay, well, we had a question from council about that.
I saw it on the video replay.
Okay. All right, thank you, Tom. Anybody else want to address the council at this time? You need to fill out a form if you're going to speak. Would you give it to the city secretary over here?
I believe you were going to speak on the Oak Hill replat. Item number nine.
Yeah.
Am I to wait?
Yeah, wait till item nine. Yeah. This is during citizens' presentations, which is not a topic, so...
Next, we have Donald Edwards.
All right. Mr. Edwards, state your name and your address, and then you have the floor.
Sure. Donald Edwards addresses 2704 Cromwell Court here in Trophy Club. Yes. I just wanted to, you know, hearing some unfortunate news recently, wanted to show, share my, kind of discussed and kind of, you know, my feeling of being against the removal of Councilman Jensen, which has come to light recently. I feel he's done a great job in regards to educating a lot of folks what's going on at town council and connecting with a lot of people that normally probably wouldn't want to be involved with town. My personal story, since getting to know Jensen and seeing his passion and what he brings to the table for our town, it's kind of inspired me to want to get involved more. So I just would like to voice my opinion and that I think would be a great disservice to the people of Trophy Club if he's removed.
Thank you, sir. Holly, who's the next person?
Mr. Brandon Blake.
Brandon, you have the floor. And state your name and address, and then you can talk.
Yeah, Brandon Blake, 2 Palmetto Court. I come here tonight, same, same as when I echo kind of what Mr. Edwards said. I don't think the removal of Councilman Jensen, Jensen is necessary at this time. I look at all the council people here. I've supported you, I've voted for you. I think that you all are doing, doing a good job, and I don't think there's any reason for anything to change with that just because of a little divisiveness, you know, emails, posts on Facebook. It just makes us all look bad. We're a small town, and I think this is an easy problem to get past, and I'd love to see, would love to see the right light shined on that tonight, and I just wanted to send that encouragement out.
Thank you. And how did you get another one turned in?
Yes, sir, a David Stout.
David, if you'd come up, state your name and address, and then you have the floor.
Thank you. David Stout, 661 Sheldon. Same as what has just been stated. Eric Jensen, he won by landslide in this town. People voted, they came out, he has done an amazing job supporting this town. So with that being said, I completely disagree with any conversation about removing him. The second side is Greg Lamont. I completely disagree with the gamesmanship and the politics that you've been playing in this town.
Okay, I'm going to have to stop you a minute. We changed our rules of order, and you need to address the entire council, not a specific member of council.
Fair enough.
So be general in your comments about that, if you would.
So, things that have transpired over the recent weeks, I completely disagree with the way this town represents themselves as a family and as a community, that when we lash out and we act in this manner, it is completely, I think, goes against being a great town to live in and what we represent. So I just, it needs to be noted and for the town to realize, as we come into future elections, those who truly represent this town.
Thank you, sir. And did we get another one, Holly?
Not for citizens' presentations.
Okay. All right. All right, so we will move on to announcements and reports. Agenda item number one. Receive Town Manager Class's update and provide input regarding the following: upcoming events, staffing, and our November and December meeting dates. Mr. Class.
Mayor and Council. Trophy Club 5K Turkey Trot will be held on Thanksgiving morning, November 22nd, at 8:00 AM at Byron Nelson High School. I would like to invite the council and our many residents to join us for this first-ever event in support of council research through the Angels Fall Up Nonprofit Organization and the Trophy Club Emergency Volunteers Association. Additionally, the annual Christmas in the Park Event will be held at Independence Park East on December 8th between 6:30 and 8:30 PM. And in years past, Mayor Sanders will read "Twas the Night Before Christmas" to our children. The Beck and Lakeville Elementary Choirs will be on hand to sing Christmas carols. There'll also be a variety of children's activities, face painting, a balloon artist, and Santa will make his annual appearance and will be available for photos. Refreshments will also be provided by Barra Church, Fellowship United Methodist Church, Lake City's Church, the Church at the Lakes, and also Starbucks. With regard to staffing, I'd like to introduce to you three of our newest staff members. Gary, if you'd stand up for us. Gary Cochran was hired as our full-time fire marshal and began his duties a week ago Monday. He comes to us as an experienced fire inspector and investigator and has completed several large projects while employed with the city of Grapevine to include Gaylord Texan and the Wolf Lodge, Great Wolf Lodge. Gary is a master firefighter, a master fire inspector, a master fire investigator, and a master arson investigator, and we're very excited to have him on our team as it relates to our upcoming PD-25 and PD-30 projects. He brings a lot to the table. So Gary, welcome. Thanks for being here tonight. Diane, if you'd stand for just a moment, I'd like to introduce you, our newest member of our Community Development Department, Diane MacRee, who's now serving in a much-needed secretary receptionist role. Diane has previously, worked previously for American Airlines, Baylor Healthcare Systems, and the city of Grapevine, and she brings a great deal of experience to our team, and we're very happy to have her with us as well. Thank you, Diane. Last but not least, Ernest, if you might stand for us. Ernest Gillespie, recently hired to fill our senior accountant vacancy, and he began his duties with the Finance Department on October 29th. Ernest earned a bachelor's degree in accounting from Stephen F. Austin University and brings to the town over 24 years of accounting experience, and we couldn't be any happier to have him with us as well. Welcome, Ernest, and thanks. Lastly, I'd like to remind council that we will only hold one council meeting in November and one council meeting in December. Therefore, we will not have council meetings scheduled for November 27th or December 25th. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Council, any question about these items? All right, seeing no one wishing the floor, we will move on. Thank you, Tom. Item number two, receive Town Council Liaison update. Discussion of same. Animal Shelter Advisory Board had a meeting on October the 29th, and our council liaison is Mayor Protem Schaffner. Mr. Schaffner, do you have any update?
Just a quick update. Susan, our Chair of the Animal Shelter Board, Susan Edstrom, she had an experience recently where she, I think, was going out on a dog, whatever you call it, rescue, find, hunt, whatever. Anyway, the resident made the statement that, because Susan, there was no dog tags on the dog, and the resident made the statement, "Well, council said I didn't have to have tags." And so I wanted to just make it clear, which we all know, our ordinances still require a rabies tag and they still require a identification of the owner. And so that, we did not take that away. That actually is still a requirement. Along those same lines, what we actually did is we eliminated the necessity or the requirement to register your dog with the town and pay a fee. That's what we eliminated. What, what the animal control and the police department has since done is they have a voluntary registration that they are calling Register Rover, and so I urge all citizens to take advantage of that. You can register your dog, they'll give you tags, and it's free of charge. It, it will help you if you lose your dog, Alicia. If you lose your dog, they...
I see a guy out there in the back row whose dog got out three times when he moved, so let's call him out instead.
So, but anyway, it helps the police department. Every, and Susan, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but every police officer has access to this database. If, if the tag is on the dog, they can quickly relocate the owner, get it to, and actually, they can even take the database, and if the dog does not have a tag, as long as it's registered, they, they can basically cross-reference the breed with the area, the street, things like that. So, all that to say that I hope that if you haven't registered your dog, you will do that. There is no fee, there is no hindrance for you to do so, and, and I'd actually like to go one step further and encourage staff. I think I've talked to Jonathan about this, perhaps, maybe I haven't, but it would be nice if we had an online registration with our new website so that that can be something that is even easier for residents because, as you know, a lot of you know that we have the No Knock Registry for solicitors, and it has a huge participation. Thousands of homes have registered for that, and so I think, obviously, staff, if we make that easier for residents, I think we'll have more participation as well. But anyway, I just wanted to let you know that while it's not required, we encourage you to Register Rover. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Schaffner. I forgot to announce at the beginning that we are currently running on generator power in this building. And so if, in fact, during our meeting, the lights blink for a moment and it goes dark, don't overreact. It means it's switching back to main power. We've actually never done this live, and so it's kind of test by fire here. We'll see how it goes. So, just wanted to let you know in case that happens to you. Hopefully, the power will just blink and you'll be back. All right. It is time for the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the town council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be a separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. We have items three through seven. Any member of council wish to remove any of those items? Seeing no one wishing the floor, we will move on. I would entertain a motion to approve consent items three through seven.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items three through seven.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rowe and seconded by Councilmember Jensen. All in favor, show your hands. All right, it is unanimous. Item three, consider, oh, I'm sorry, we just approved those. Item eight. At this time, item eight is the public hearing of case RP-18-01, the Highlands Lot 22R. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request for a replat for the purpose of combining two commonly-owned properties into one lot containing approximately .29 acres of land and generally located west of the Highlands Court and approximately 150 feet north of Morgan Lane. It is 7:22, and we are in public hearing, and I would recognize our town planner for some comments, Lisa Payne.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this item is to consider a replat for Highlands Court. The strategic link for this item is nature and beautification to maintain town assets, services, and codes of ordinances that preserve the natural beauty of the town. Earlier this year, the town grant, the town council granted the request to transfer town-owned property to, that sits between a gas well site and a homeowner's property to that homeowner because the land is not valuable to the town. The deed has been filed with the county as of October. Thus, the homeowners now own that transferred piece of property and are simply requesting to incorporate it into their existing lot. The proposed replat conforms to the subdivision ordinance, and P&amp;Z unanimously recommended approval. Staff recommends approval as well, and the applicant and I are available for questions.
All right. Does anyone wish to speak during the public hearing about this item? See one, see no one wishing to speak? It is 7:24, and we will close the public hearing and move back into regular session and consider item 8B. Consider to take appropriate action regarding a request for a replat for the purpose of combining two commonly-owned properties into one lot containing approximately .29 acres of land and generally located west of the Highlands Court and approximately 150 feet north of Morgan Lane. I'd recognize Ryland Rowe.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve case RP-18-001 regarding a request for a replat in the Highlands Lot 22R.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, this is seconded by Mayor Protem Schaffner. Any discussion, council, or questions? Seeing no one wishing to speak, all in favor, show your hands. It is approved unanimously. It is 7:25, and we will open, open a public hearing on item 9A, case RP-18-02, Oak Hill Lots 63R and 64R. Conduct a public hearing regarding a request for a replat for the purpose of approving setbacks, vacating an easement, and relocating a property line between two commonly-owned lots containing approximately .62 acres of land and generally located northeast of Hilltop and approximately 170, 170 feet north of Oak Hill Drive. I would recognize our town planner, Lisa Payne, for some comments.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. The purpose of this item is to consider a replat for, for Hilltop. The strategic link is nature and beautification to maintain the town assets, services, and codes of ordinances that preserve the natural beauty of the town. The applicant's proposing to move the common lot line of Lot 63 and 64 out from under the existing house that sits upon it. By moving that lot line south, Lot 63 will gain compliance with the code while keeping the minimum lot size for both lots intact. In addition, a 10-foot drainage utility easement is centered on that lot line, so this proposal includes the abandonment of that easement and the establishment of a 10-foot drainage and utility easement on the new lot line. All signatures from the appropriate utility entities have been obtained. Secondly, confirmation of lot line classifications is requested due to the unusually shaped lots and the position of the existing house. The applicant would like to consider the northern property lines as side property lines and the eastern property line as a rear property line, which would confirm the house's compliance with the setbacks. The proposed replat conforms with the town subdivision ordinance. P&amp;Z recommended approval. Staff recommends approval as well, and the applicant and I are available for questions.
Thank you, Lisa. We had two people sign up to speak to this item. Mr. Worth Blake, if you would come to the podium, state your name and your address, and then you have the floor, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sanders and members of the council. Excuse me. My name is Worth Blake. My wife and I, Dorothy, live at 244 Oak Hill, Oak Hill Drive, where we have lived for 28, almost 29 years. We've been very, very happy with our location there, except for the problem I'm going to discuss with you this evening. During this period of time that we've lived there, we, the owner of the property back behind us has had, wait, if I can set that, yes, thank you very much. Lisa, if I could try to point out, get my bearings down here right. My, help me there for sure so I can be sure I...
Your house is 46.
Okay. What, I do just punch that and it'll show?
No.
I'll have to do this?
Just say the number 46, we'll know.
Okay.
Use the mouse and...
All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, yes. Yes. Okay. Yes, our property is number 46, Lot 46. I'm joined here tonight by other neighbors who are willing to come and talk with us, explain to you their position, the same hope that, that might be near mine. On the, was it the time when, recently when the P&amp;Z met, we, group, same group, met and discussed the same matter with them. Met Mr. Houston, who represents the applicant, and we've talked friendly, we're not trying to be opposing what he's trying to do. What we would like to have, though, is that some way that there be understanding from us as citizens who are having a real problem with drainage. This property, the Hilltop, as it stands, is up higher than we are, and we're getting a lot of down flow on us. I had written up here that the major complaint we have, and I think I pretty well represent the other members of the neighborhood who are here with us, there are six of us that live along that, that boundary line there. The water line coming down there has caused some real problems, and we were... The water line coming down there has caused some real problems, and we were wondering if maybe, I think we talked with Mr. Busby, no, pardon, Uzy, okay, thank you, excuse me, that there be ways that either the property owner or the town would make it possible that there would be a storm drainage line that would be extended from 44 north to a empty, wherever it has to go, that, so that there would be a, not a continual problem with water flow over onto our property. I've had, excuse me, I've spent a lot of money on the drainage that comes down and has caused us to be, had damage to our fence, our trees, our shrubs, lawn, patio, outdoor furniture. Worst that we're popping, though, is it has now damaged our foundation. The neighborhood, the neighbor to us, Mr. Smith, Mr. and Mrs. Smith, have experienced already approximately $30,000 in foundation problems. The lady on next, for her, Ms. Vicki Noblet, has also had a tremendous problem with the water flow. So what we, we don't know how to present this to the council, other than to tell you that we have this problem. Well, I understand that you can't, we can't make it a problem that you have, but maybe if you understood from our perspective that there's a way that there could be, some way where it could be a flow of water that would not cause all of us. I'd like to now call on my neighbor here, Mr. Eric Orson, to give you his position about his thoughts on that. Eric?
All right. Eric, would you please come forward, state your name and your address, and then you'll have the floor.
Good evening, Eric Orson. I'm at 246 Oak Hill Drive, Trophy Club. Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm, so I'm on this map. I'm located at 45. And yes, I would agree, just in support of Mr. Blake, that, and the rest of the neighbors, that there is considerable flooding. I've dealt with over the past several years. I've actually had to have drainage installed twice, actually, two different times. The first one did one work, it was just connecting my downspouts. The second time, I ended up doing a full French drain to try to help. And so I've spent a lot of money, and as well as resawed the whole backyard, because of the drainage, for me, that specifically just comes from the house located at 65. But it's just through the fence, it'll come, you know, if it rains well enough, you'll literally have a fountain, I'll have a fountain that comes into my backyard. And so I would just love to support him as far as if there's any drainage that we could do, all the way from 64 down, you know, through 65. I know that's just me, for me specifically. And then Ms. Sarah, that's over in 44, the location 44, maybe she would have something else. But I know, I would just love to, I'm just here to support what he's saying. And if there's any kind of drainage situation we could work out, it'd be very helpful because it's caused significant damage to our area as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Holly, do you have anybody else sign up for this?
No, mayor.
Anybody in the audience want to speak on this public hearing? Seeing no one wishing to do so, we will close the public hearing and enter back into our regular session at 7:33. And we are on item number B, nine B. Consider take appropriate action regarding a request for a replat for the purpose of applying setbacks, vacating an easement, and relocating a property line between two commonly owned lots containing approximately .62 acres of land and generally located northeast of Hilltop and approximately 170 feet north of Oak Hill Drive. First person who is asked to speak is Councilmember Rowe.
Thank you, sir. So my question is for Tommy. So how do we, well, I guess first, like, for everyone's information that isn't fully aware, this particular neighborhood was developed in the late 70s, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, and that's why I have two questions. The first is, because this sometimes comes up, it's come up in my neighborhood, I've had a couple of neighbors ask me, and my neighborhood's more like late 90s, so it's obviously a little bit newer. But when someone, just for purely for educational purposes, when someone has a drainage issue and they suspect, like, let's say I suspect that there's an issue with the drainage easement on one of my adjacent neighbors, and obviously, I can't really go in, well, maybe I'm friendly enough with my neighbors, but say you don't know them or you don't want to cause trouble, what is the proper method to determine whether or not an easement's been altered such that it, in existing construction, such that it's now causing a downstream issue on one's property? Is that something, is that something that you guys are able to go check out to say, yeah, it still looks okay, or no, it doesn't? Or is that something that we have to leave to the private individuals? I guess, I've never really known for sure what the proper process is there.
Personally, good evening, mayor and council, I would invite those people to contact us. Depending on when it might have been built, especially in the early to mid 70s, there's not a lot of criteria that we have like we do now. Swells, berms, flowage patterns haven't changed. And it's something that I can take a look at or have staff take a look at to see what's going on with the water and why. And what a lot of people don't understand is, just in our everyday working in our yards and putting up steel edging or things, those are dams. They, little things like that can direct water. When you're dealing with a situation where you've got the top of a hill, for example, the undeveloped lot, that's just flowing naturally, and it's going to come down. But those things are, taking a look at when new construction comes about, we start looking at those drainage patterns. But getting back to your question, staff would be the first place to go. It might be that we have to recommend an engineer to them, or that thought of an engineer to get involved to make corrective action on their own property. But it's difficult, depending on the neighborhood, to get everybody involved to come in agreement on how that's going to be done.
Right. Well, it's good. I've had, over the years, a couple of neighbors I've sent to y'all. One, and I'm glad that they were right in going to y'all, and it wasn't just because I told them to go, to holler at y'all, so that's good. Now, so my second question is, do we have, I assume, since it's, there's potential for a new structure to go here, which is what the neighbors are probably wondering about, right?
That is correct.
I assume, and I'm correcting, I'm correcting this assumption, that modern day, obviously, current standards will be applied in terms of drainage plan requirements and things of that nature.
That's correct. Well, when a permit application comes in for any structure, residential, commercial, or otherwise, they've got to show to us what they're planning on doing with the drainage. What we do is compare that to the maps that were designed at the time the plat was filed, which is the original, before any changes, before add-ons, accessory structures, things like that were coming, and we look at it that way. The majority of the time, the builder has the foresight to look at what's going on and maybe recognize that that doesn't work. If that's the case, we get together, we talk about it, see what best fits for the downstream people to make it work. Chances are, you're not going to find swells, for example, along common property lines here to where you've got to turn that water. There's a lot of discussion takes place before that permit's ever issued, and then, once it is determined what is feasible for that lot, once the structure's built, like in all permits, we go back through for a final inspection to confirm that the drainage that was approved by whatever method, that's what works, that's what we agreed to, has been accomplished, and that is submitted by a civil engineer for approval.
Cool. So, I mean, this one is a little bit unique in that we're not looking at an entire subdivision getting developed all at once. There's obviously conditions that currently exist that have to be taken into consideration. Are you confident that we have the processes in place through that, that you just described, to ensure that these folks will be able to have, that the current picture of the way things look today will be taken into account when, when and if plans are submitted for a structure on this lot?
Certainly, confident and comfortable with it.
Cool. Okay. That's all I have.
Councilmember Lamont?
Yeah, I took pictures of the vacant lot, and I sent you some questions. Could you go over, I apologize if we can't get the picture up there. The French drain is coming from Lot 63.
Correct.
That's, where is that going? I mean, visually, I think I know, but could you explain it for the record?
It appears to be coming off of Lot 64. We don't know if that's the case exactly, simply because it's underground and we don't know what it's doing, what's it enters. But it's presumed that it does come off of 64.
63 or 64? 64 is the vacant, isn't it?
I'm sorry, 63. 63. The northern lot, the northern lot. But it comes right across the back of 50, but I'm presuming right now that it's coming off of 63.
And that's the current owner who owns both lots?
Pardon?
That's the current owner who owns both lots?
I don't know who the ownership.
Yes, sir.
One owner has both of them right now. Okay. Yes, and I have spoken to the prospective purchaser about that pipe, and whoever does wind up buying the property, that will be one of the first orders that that pipe is removed, whether it's in its entirety or we determine exactly what it's doing. What is it delivering and why is it there? There's no damage on Lot 49 that is apparent. There is drainage coming off the lot. The pipe's been there a long time. We don't know what even reason it serves. If it does serve as drainage, it could be cut back and a pop-up release could be done internal on the property to where we would get the sheet flow, but you can't concentrate water in a drain of that nature like that pipe has done. It will have to be, it'll have to go away.
You're saying no damage, but there's erosion on both sides?
There is erosion, but you've got to understand, the rains we've been having the last couple of months is the biggest we've ever had, and there's been no control, even a pipe that size would have been overrun and more damage would have occurred. I'm not saying the pipe, I did say the pipe has not caused any damage. When we were out there this morning, it wasn't that apparent that that pipe itself was causing that damage. But it is not allowed to come across that property line to another property, which inadvertently is going to damage an adjacent property, which is prohibited.
Well, how did they get a permit? Do you require permits for French drains?
No.
Okay. So how did they wind up installing that there? No, just on their own and?
Most probably on their own. And based on the looks of that pipe, it's been there longer than I've been here.
And the retaining wall, very expensive that they put in, that seems to be leaning towards the erosion part.
Right. The wall, as it stands right now, is the way it was built. We've got confirmation of that from the engineer. We did have a problem with one portion of it where there was some cracking. It wasn't a structural failure, it was more of an aesthetic nature. They got the engineer back in there, took a look at it, made remedial action repairs to it, and there's no sign of even the crack at this point on that wall. Those are compression walls, which are probably the best you could put in.
All right, you finished, Greg? So I was next in the list. There was a mention in the public hearing about, I think, lots, more like 46, 45, feeling that they were getting a lot of drainage, and mentioned a storm sewer. Have we looked at that area? If 64 is construction, I think our policy now is to make people drain towards the street. Is that right?
Not always.
Not always, okay.
No, it depends on the natural slope of the property and what was intended at the time it was developed.
Okay. So I guess I'm just asking, during this process where 64 tries to build, or whatever they're trying to do, we should just make sure we look at how we're maybe dealing with some of that drainage if there is a town responsibility of a storm sewer? I don't know that there is, I'm just saying. That was Mr. Worth's comment, I believe, wasn't it?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Eric, you have the floor.
So first, I want to say privately, Lisa and I have discussed presentations, so publicly I want to tell you thank you. I appreciate the presentations that you're giving. Questions to the gentlemen that have spoke? Y'all, I assume y'all approve of what's being presented, what P&amp;Z passed, and you wish for us to pass this as well tonight. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, we've not, we're not opposing their development. We just want to be sure that what they do, that they would also consider, if they have to also pay for it to get that drain taken care of.
Did, so Tommy, did P&amp;Z address that specifically?
They basically referred the homeowners to this location for input. I did speak at that there well, and we did talk about drainage and making it work, but it wasn't through a piping system.
Specifically, it hasn't been addressed in a staff recommendation tonight?
It has not.
Thank you, sir.
So one other question that I had, I'm assuming if 64 tries to build, they will have to do a drainage plan?
That is correct.
To get approval?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time, or questions by council? All right. If there is no one wishing to speak, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve case RP-18-002 pertaining to replat for Oak Hill Lot 63R and 64R.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Rowe, a second by Councilmember Jensen. Any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll call for the vote. All those approving item nine B, show your hands. It is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and just stay involved, and good luck developing. And you've heard some of those concerns those people had. All right, we'll move on to item number 10. This was a referred agenda item, case O-AMD-17-04, artificial turf. Consider take appropriate action regarding an ordinance of the town initiated request to amend landscaping regulations in section 14.02.352D5 and section 14.02.352G5 of the Trophy Club Code of Ordinances to allow artificial turf on residentially zoned properties. Tommy, you going to make some remarks first?
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. As the mayor mentioned, this is a, before you tonight, is the referred agenda in regards to this landscape ordinance change. The strategic link is, as were the other two, nature and beautification, maintain town assets, services, codes of ordinances that preserve the natural beauty of the town. At the last meeting, there were several comments made from council in regards to issues that were agreed upon or not sure of, and the staff was asked to go back, take a look at those items, and then implement them into the ordinance the best we could, and meet with representatives of council in order to talk about that. If you look at the changes, there were some issues that were removed and some that were added. And basically, at the very beginning, you'll find, and I believe it's going to be red on y'all's paperwork, it didn't show up good here, so we went back to yellow, but it's the same information. We added a definition for the turf, which included two of the items, which was the language for material and its appearance. We required, went back for the requirements for the permit to be applied for, which allowed for information to be submitted that we could use for future enforcement issues, which is the specifications for installation, infill type, material type, with a 70, what they call a 70-weight. And if there's questions on that, I'll answer them later. It's a little bit odd to see 70-weight without pounds, ounces, whatever behind it. Submission of a grading plan, like we would any structure. What I did change there was to take out the certified grading plan from an engineer. When we look back, staff, we talked about it, when we do a storage building or a swimming pool, we look at these things. We don't have a certified engineer come by and do the grading plan like we do on a brand-new construction of a single-family home. So that change was made there. And then I left in there the last comment about damage control to the product, if in fact, there is work that has to be done, either in an easement or in a right-of-way. Staff still recommends approval of the, of the ordinance as proposed.
All right, thank you. Ryland, you have the floor?
Thank you, sir. Yeah, so this looks, this looks nice. I appreciate the extra whittling that y'all have done on it, and P&amp;Z also, Jeff and Mike and Brandon are out here. They must all be at the edges of their seats, wondering about artificial turf. I'm really pretty cool with what I see here. I have one thing that I'm still wondering about, and I'm wondering about, should we have a maximum, or I'm sorry, a minimum lot coverage percentage to require a permit? And the only reason I ask that is, let's say somebody wanted to just do a putting green in their backyard. And in reality, it's similar to putting in a flower bed, maybe, or a little bit of decomposed granite type thing or something. I'd hate for them to somehow get sideways because they didn't get a permit for that because they just weren't thinking of it as the same as redoing their whole yard.
Correct.
So is there like a percentage number that staff could recommend, be it 25%, whatever, that if it's above that number, you have to have, get a permit?
It's, certainly, a percentage could be added. The position I've taken as the building official is to look at the ordinance in regard of when we put something, we may get a permit for a storage building, but it's not considered like the primary structure is. Using your exact example, and I think I brought this back up in February, a putting green is not landscaping. It's like that storage building or that swimming green is not landscaping. It's like that storage building or that swimming pool. If a homeowner comes in, and what I've seen a lot of out in the field is when a swimming pool is put in, that's typically when it's, it can go in at any time, but that's where it's real popular to put in. Instead of having a solid deck, they're going with stepping stones. And in between those, they're putting artificial turf. The rest of the yard remains natural. I don't look at that as being landscaping and putting this requirement on them.
Okay.
If the full yard is going?
Sure.
Another story.
All right. My question was answered. Thank you, sir.
All right. Councilmember Lamont, you have the floor.
I know you mentioned it, but should we state in here easement or right-of-way? Because it says here, damage during repair, replacement, or addition of public utility streets and sidewalks. But it doesn't limit it to right-of-way. What if they come in with a big backhoe and they go past the right-of-way and take out the astrid turf?
That's a good point. Typically, and in the reality of it is, these subcontractors want to work. And if they make too much noise in the process, they're not going to get a job. When this product is out there, it's simple enough to roll it up and move it out of the way. I don't feel that that's going to be an issue. I can add the right-of-way portion to it, but that would limit our, us getting them to correct a problem if it came about. Because a right-of-way, that is a definite line. That is a defined line. And sometimes they have to go beyond that defined line to do the work that they're trying to accomplish, whether it be utilities, driveway, sidewalk, or whatever.
Fair enough.
I will do whatever council wants. I would maybe caution.
Councilmember Jensen?
So the items that you have listed in red, these are changes since our last council meeting?
That is correct.
Okay. So it's my understanding, Mayor, that we do have an amended motion on the floor?
Correct.
As we did at the last meeting. I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve as presented by staff.
I'll second.
All right. So Jensen is making a substitute motion. Rowe is seconding. And that motion is replacing in its entirety the original motion that we referred. And you're approving, the motion is to approve this case as presented. Is that what you're doing, Ryland? I mean, Eric?
Yes, sir. The only issue that's, problem is, in their staff recommendation, it states, staff recommends approval of ordinance, and it lists P and Z as presented. But I'm not approving it as P and Z approved it. I'm, my motion is to approve it as given here at the dais, which we all have in front of us, the, as laid out with the changes of the ordinance in red. So I just want to make sure that's clear and also clear with Ryland as the second.
Yep.
So approve as presented in our packet?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? All right. Tommy, does that seem fine with you?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. It is replacing our original item of referral with this new motion. Any discussion about this?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Schaffner?
There we go. I would like to amend the motion to direct town staff to process and approve all pending permits being held up due to the prohibition of synthetic turf by close of business tomorrow evening.
I'll second, so we can discuss it.
Now, the only reason-
Is that a big deal?
The only reason I say that is there's three, three, correct?
Three.
Three that are open. The one that I know about was the whole reason that this even came about, has been open for over a year. And so all they're waiting for is for us to approve artificial turf and they will get a green tag.
I can assure you that one will be handled first.
Okay. So that's the only reason I say that. Just, just-
All right. So we have a motion to amend by Schaffner, seconded by Rowe, that we approve, you said by tomorrow evening.
Close of business.
Close of business tomorrow evening. And Tommy, are you good with that?
Yes, sir. They'll be processed first thing in the morning.
All right. Any other discussion?
Thought maybe I should have pushed that time up.
Good catch, Eric, on the substitute motion.
Thanks, sir.
This man pays attention to details.
All right. Anybody else wishing to speak on this? If you'd like to, please come forward and state your name, your address, and then you can speak.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Sue Harper, and I live at sixteen Fairgreen Drive. And I wanted to talk to you about this artificial turf. I think we could do better than that in Trophy Club. I could see people putting it perhaps a putting green in the back, or a child's play area, or an area that's really bad. But I don't think it's going to really look good in the front and side yards. And it's, you know, it's basically a rug, is what it is. Rugs have to be maintained, cleaned, and you get pet droppings, you get bird droppings. How are you going to clean it and take care of it? I have rugs. They have to be taken care of, or they come pretty bad. And I guess eight years is about the average that you get out of these. My question is, who's going to look after the fact when these start to look bad? Is code enforcement going to come along and say, hey, you know, you got to replace that? It's going to be a lot of money. I'm concerned. I live on the golf course, and I won't have to look at it there, but I'm concerned what's going to happen. And it's, you know, it's, it's not environmentally friendly. It's probably going to end up in the landfill. So I really wish to maintain the integrity and the aesthetic appeal in this neighborhood, in this town, that you would really consider limiting this to backyards and being strict on code enforcement. I like Trophy Club. I moved here because it's a beautiful town, and I'd like to see it maintain that integrity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, I thought I had somebody speaking.
I canceled.
And it disappeared. Okay. Anybody else wishing to speak at this time? All right. Hearing no one, we'll call for the vote.
Amendment.
As amended?
Yeah, as amended, yeah.
Oh.
So all those in favor of the amendment, please show your hands. All opposed, same sign. One opposed, Sanders. It does carry. All right, the motion is amended. All those in favor of the motion as amended, show your hands. All opposed, same sign. It did carry. Unanimously. All right. Item number eleven. Discussion and take appropriate action regarding setting a date for the 2019 council retreat and discuss potential agenda items. Mr. Class, you have the floor.
Mayor and Council, at this time, would like to propose a date for the next council retreat, for Saturday, January twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen, which is the last Saturday in January.
All right. Does anybody at this time have issues with that Saturday? Councilmember Kurtz is not here, so we don't know about his. Anybody aware of anything at this time?
I do. I would prefer it the week ahead, but just my personal feeling.
I could do both of those. So if there's any discussion, I could miraculously both, act fast.
Anybody else?
Slots are limited. I can do either.
Yeah, I haven't checked my calendar. So, all right. So if we, if you'll follow up and check with the Councilmember Kurtz, just to see where he is on that twenty-sixth date, and of course, the availability of the week before, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then we can get that set. All right. Anything else you need with that?
No, sir. I'll, I'll square that up. Additionally, staff would propose a few items for the agenda, and then we'd love to hear from council with some ideas that y'all might have. We would propose that we start the agenda off with staff being able to provide council with a higher level financial overview, which we hope would include budget assumptions and tax rate implications for 2020, potential service level changes that might be impacted by that, and discuss with you the town's long-term financial outlook. Additionally, we'd like to potentially propose to talk with you about staff compensation and discuss personnel issues, and then discuss any council initiatives, projects, or capital budget items that would be desirous of council. And then lastly, it would be time for the town secretary, town manager, and town attorneys' quarterly goals and objectives in review contracts, contract reviews.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, Tom?
No, sir.
All right. Eric, you have the floor.
Can we add to it to address the yearly calendar at that time?
Good idea.
What our, what council meetings we'll have?
Yeah, we did that last year. Sounds good.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I forgot if we had discussed, Mayor, if we're doing one meeting in January because of this, or are we still doing standard two meetings in January?
I don't recall any changes, but I don't know. Anybody else remember?
We haven't. I don't think we've talked about it yet. I think last year, we decided to do, like Eric said, and drop, during this, during this time when we had this discussion, I think we decided to drop that council meeting proceeding, or either immediately proceeding or following the retreat.
As I recall, because of the holiday season, that we only held one meeting in January, and it was the retreat.
All right. So maybe January twenty-second is our normal second meeting in January, and our, and that would be the one closest to both dates. So maybe we should, if there's consensus, maybe that would be the one to cut.
Ryland, is that what you were going to say?
No, actually, my other one was, let's have a, let's make sure we have an item for just, you know, capital improvement projects outlook. Tends to be something that I think seemed to hit at that meeting every year, so.
Yes, sir.
Be a good one to have.
And so there's still the open item of which meeting, what meetings do we have in January, given this? And it may very well be that we can cancel one of the meetings and still accomplish the retreat, so.
So if I understand correctly, it'd be one meeting and then one retreat, which would be a total of two meetings for the month.
How does everybody feel? I'm okay with just the retreat, potentially, but I don't know if there's things we need to pass that would be coming to us, maybe that are times-
We have a charter consideration as well to keep in play there, where there's only so many months out of the year where we have less than two, I believe, or something like that. So we should cross-check it with that. And typically, we only have one in July, one in November, and so on, so.
We can look at all that, and then I can propose by email to y'all a potential date for one or two meetings, if that's necessary.
David, do you have some comments?
Last year, we had mediation in a case, so we had to have a special meeting at the retreat. I don't know if that started off or not.
Right. I remember us going out of retreat just to have a special meeting. Okay. So you just need to look at some of that, so we get that a little bit more defined. Anybody else have comments about this? All right. Moving on to item number twelve, discussion of items for future agenda to include agenda items for consideration to the December eleventh council agenda and items for council future agenda list. Call your attention to the meeting, proposed agenda for December eleventh council. Any items that you see here that you or have you want to add to these particular items? Tom, there is an item six A that is on this agenda. I know you've had some discussion with Carmen with the Mud about this kind of thing. Will you be ready for that by then?
Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else have anything on this December eleventh? Eric, I'm sorry.
Sorry. I want to discuss future agenda.
Okay, that's all right. All right. So if nobody has anything else for this December eleventh, we'll go to future agenda. Eric, you have the floor.
So I think the one item can be removed, item twelve, in regards to the citizen response team. I believe Chief Carroll has kicked off something. And so really, I think it's in his hands now to present to council at some point. So really, does that sound fair?
All right. If no objection, we will remove item twelve. All right. Anybody else on, I had a question about item number five. What's the status of our direction for Freeze and Nichols to do some work on the stormwater master plan?
They've provided us with a bid to do the paperwork portion of it, and it would just stem from that point.
All right. So that could be coming back to us as a financial thing?
Yes.
Or what are we going to do with it, Tom?
He's due for an update, I believe, on December eleventh for the stormwater.
And it'll be noting what they're proposing to do and the value, the fee. It's sitting on my desk and ready to go.
Okay. All right. Very good. Anybody else have something on future agenda?
Yes.
Hello?
You can remove item number ten. I met with the chief, actually, today, and I think that if any council members had any concerns over that item, I would encourage them to meet with the chief. He's got all that information. I don't think it requires necessarily a presentation.
All right. Is that okay? No one object to that? All right. Eric, you have the floor.
Yeah. In regards to item number eleven, in short-term rentals, in light of recent judgment in Tarrant County against Grapevine, is this something we want to keep on our future agenda, or remove it? And I would, Councilman Lamont put it on, so I guess the question goes to Councilman Lamont, if this is something to remain on here at this time.
Well, it's on future agenda. Just as hold. Will this be going to a higher court? Anybody know?
The Grapevine case is pending. The court ruled to not enforce the ordinance while they're deciding. But it is pending, and you have, I think I've sent y'all briefs earlier about the ones pending in the Court of Appeals in Austin, and the reports really online.
Just any timeframe on that? I know it's the court system.
Yeah, if I could tell you that, I'd be doing-
So I would assume the town attorney's recommendation would be to wait till a court makes a decision before we address it?
We can talk about it a little bit, think about stuff, and may put y'all comfortable. But I can send y'all an email.
Yeah. It's not an action item right now, just future agenda.
All right.
Wait for the judge.
All right. So if, if no objection, we'll just leave it for right now and see kind of what happens. Yeah, I noticed that also, and there's no decision other than wait.
Hurry up and wait.
Still an issue that lots of municipalities are concerned about. And so it's going to be playing out for us as we see it. All right. So I think that takes care of item number twelve, unless somebody else, something else to add to those. In just a moment, we are going to convene into executive session after I read this. Pursuant to the following designated sections of the Texas Government Code, annotated chapter five-five-one, Texas Open Meeting Act, the council will convene in executive session to discuss the following. A, consultation with attorney under subsection two, to consult with the town attorney on a matter which is the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meeting Act, specifically item number one, case number eighteen dash nine-six-eight-one dash one-five-eight, Towne Trophy Club v. Michael T. Sly. Item number two, sign ordinance. And item number three, resign to run and election issues. It is eight oh eight. We are in closed session.
You had B.
Item B, deliberation regarding real property to discuss and deliberate that purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, if deliberation in an open meeting would have detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in the negotiations with a third person. Property north of Highway one-fourteen, east of Trophy Club Drive, and west of town limits. So hopefully, the recording did not stop, and it is eight oh nine, and we are in closed session.
Can you not have?
It is nine thirty-six, and we have reconvened into regular session. Item number fourteen, consider and take appropriate action regarding-
Check on action on the twelve and thirteen first, coming out of executive.
No, I don't think so.
Well, fourteen was the next item. So that's, that's where we are. Consider and take appropriate action regarding the ordinance of the Town of Trophy Club, ordering and calling a special action to be held.
Point of order. I object to calling, to the consideration of the question.
All right. So we have a parliamentary procedure that Ryland Rowe has objected to consideration. That is a non-debatable item. It does require us to move directly to a vote, and it does require a two-thirds vote to uphold the objection to consideration. So council, just to make sure you're clear, we are voting on, do you support and object to consideration? to consideration? Do you support an objection to consideration? If you vote affirmatively, then the matter of item fourteen will be dealt with, and we will move to item fifteen. Anybody have a question? All right. All those in favor of the motion to object to consideration, show your hands. So, I have unanimous then, okay. So, I didn't have to name everybody. So, that item number fourteen is dealt with, and we will move on to item fifteen, consider and take appropriate action regarding executive session. Are there any other items that anybody wishes to vote on? If not, it is nine thirty-eight, and we are adjourned.